Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we're joined by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody. We're so glad you're here today.
We are, and we also have the amazing Colin and Julie from our team here with us. Hey guys.
How's it going everyone?
Excited to be with you guys. Today, we have a hot topic, a highly requested topic. Today, we're going to be talking about DIYing your newsletters, your monthly newsletters. And before you run away screaming, I want to promise you that what we're going to learn today is something that's going to allow you to get your newsletters done, six months, six months worth of newsletters done in an afternoon, right? Where you, all you have to do is fill in the final touches on the first of the month and, and finally release you from the cycle of reactivity in your business, right? Because so much of what we have to do is brand partners is sort of in response to things that Young Living does. Because you are a brand partner of Young Living, they're calling the shots, they're making the marketing, and we of course are responsible for getting out there into the world and making sure that people know about all of the great stuff that's there. But you don't have to have your business be based around waiting until the last second for them to drop whatever that new thing is. You don't have to operate that way. So we're going to talk about how we can get that done today while still take, taking advantage, of course, of the very important monthly information that you get from, from, from Young Living, like the gift with purchase information, but plugging that into a structure that you can feel confident about. And then, of course, use on an ongoing basis to grow and support your business. So as we are coming in, please come into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from, which you're excited to maybe learn more about or to be able to do after our call today. How many of us have maybe tried to create our own newsletter before? If you maybe felt overwhelmed in doing it, let us know in the chat. We're going to hopefully lift a whole lot of that stress off of your shoulders here today. One thing as well, if you got the email, by the way, if you aren't getting emails about these calls, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and sign up for them. So you can get, you can get these notifications and be the first to get resource bundles, like the one that went out this morning to subscribers. So no, newsletters don't have to be scary. Also, what's up Hudson Valley? I'm back in New York. I'm so excited to be back home. I was gone for almost a month. It was a lot. So we are thrilled to have you guys here for, yeah, this is also our first weekly work session of 2023. So what's up guys? Congrats on being here and working your business. Alright, so we are really excited for, to, to share this with you today. Newsletters do not have to be a ton of work if we get the right work done in the first place. So without further ado, you guys keep that chat going, get to know each other. By the way, if you want to get to know each other better, head over to our group on Facebook, get to know one another, share some resources that are working great for you. And then, of course, our team is present in there as well. So what I'm going to go ahead and do in a team role as well, we're going to hop out of video. So we've got a great recording quality for you guys. Cause obviously we do want to make sure that if you want to re-watch this, if you're watching live, or if you are watching this for the first time, that you've got a great recording, we're going to make sure that that is there. There we go. I think my screen is sharing correctly. So perfect. I've got some brief slides that I'm going to share with you here today, but we're going to be spending the bulk of our time here in a checklist that I've made for you. And then, of course, getting into the nitty gritty of what you're going to do to get this stuff done. Alright, because I promise you, you can get six months worth, worth of work done in an afternoon. And it's not going to be super hard. Alright, so we can do some brainstorming here as well. It looks like Sheila might be interested in coming up with some topics. That's the kind of thing that we can definitely continue a discussion for inside of our Facebook group as well. So I'm excited to see what we come up with here today. Alright, so what's happening today is first, we're going to talk about how to get six or even 12 months worth of Young Living newsletters done in an afternoon. We're also going to talk about how you can get the word out on the first of the month without stressing yourself out. How many of us know this feeling? You know what I'm referring to right now? First of the month gift with purchase comes out, it might be Sunday and you're sitting down with your family, but you are in the back of your mind freaking out because oh, I gotta go get all this information out to everybody right now. Right? Oh, okay. If you know this and you feel this, if you're identifying with this right now, I want to give you a moment to go and grab your favorite empowering oil. Or, or maybe even an oil that you use for release or EFT, maybe literally the blend release. I want you to go grab an oil, grab release if you have it, please. And I want you to put it on and breathe it in. We are going to learn a new way of working today. And this way of working is going to empower you to have more time to feel better and to get better results, work in your business in a way that works for you. Alright, so let's open ourselves up to that. We've got clarity, valor, frankincense going on right now. Share what you're oiling up with right now. Prep for this because I am going to be sharing something with you that is outside of what you have seen and been told up to this point, most likely, have the highest potential, believe in vision. Yes. Oh, these are great. Fantastic. Thank you guys for being here and inspiring everyone in the chat. Alright, so we are going to move forward without stressing ourselves out over the first of the month. And of course, we do have a new resource bundle to help you get this all done quickly. Alright, and of course, as always, we will have live help and Q and A. So if you came here today looking for help, whether it has to do with this topic that we're training on today or not, please head over to the Q and A because our chat does get very lively as it is right now. Please head over to the Q and A and put your questions there that you want us to see and answer so that we can make sure we get to them. And then, of course, if you watch this as a recording in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be notified of upcoming trainings like this one. And if you would like to work together on a live call as a member of our community, we can work on things in your system. We can help you get squared away on strategies, whatever that might look like for you. You can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and set aside some dedicated space on a call like this one for us to work together on your good oiling system. Alright, so who here sends monthly newsletters? Maybe just a quick show of hands. Do you send a monthly newsletter? Okay, awesome, awesome. Seen a lot. That's most of us. Awesome. Not consistent. Okay, that's fine. We can be open and honest about this. Fantastic. Alright, well, how many of us are maybe in a position now, today, this week, this month, where we have to figure out new content? Yep. Love it. Okay, great. You are in the right place. Alright, so the problem with this, the approach, and this is what we were talking about previously. This is what we oiled up for. Okay? Please grab your oil and breathe in deep if you have not done so already. Okay? I want to tell you a brief little anecdote. I don't know. It's, it's, it's sort of an analogy, really more than anything else. You guys know I love those analogies. I have nephews, two of them. They're the most adorable creatures on the planet. They're absolutely rambunctious. They are five and three. And their mom affectionately calls them Pete and repeat. Because once, when one of them does something, the other one has to do that thing too, right? So if, if the older one is playing with something or even saying something, the, the younger one is following behind and doing the same thing, right? And it's an adorable thing when you're kids, right? And, and you don't really have to worry about productivity, right? You don't really have to worry about getting things done, about getting things done, right? It's fun to play and, and to, you know, to mimic and do all that kind of stuff, right? But in business, it's just not smart. We don't need to be repeat to Young Living's Pete. Right? You know, the reason why we have had this approach for years, and for those of you who have been with Young Living for a long time, I'm really speaking more to you if you've been with a company for maybe five years or more, alright? There has been a real need historically for brand partners to come up with content to educate and engage customers on a monthly basis. There has been in the past, a real and legitimate need for this. I will make one caveat or exception. If you're in a newer or emerging market for Young Living, where there might not be as much content infrastructure yet, this, this may apply to you as well, right? So what we want to, what we want to remember as brand partners, and this is true across the network marketing industry period, is that we are here to really be a beacon of light that shines toward the company, right? We are not, we're not Pete and repeat with the company, which is why I brought up Pete and repeat. I couldn't get that out of my head today. So one of the main reasons why it's important for you to shift this approach and how you're getting information out on a monthly basis, because what it has looked like historically is you get the information from Young Living and then you go and you regurgitate that exact same information to all of your people, like they can't go to the Young Living website and read. Right? Why on earth do you need to repeat their work? And, and here's the, the main reason why it's important for you to take a different approach. It's that even if you're a diamond and above, you know, if you're, if you're at a leadership level where you might give this privileged information early, you still can't and won't know what the gift with purchase or PV promos are more than a couple of days in advance. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to wait for a third party, even if they're the ones writing my checks, to, to figure out what they're doing 48 hours before I've got to do something important for my business. Right? Can, can we just take a, take a step back and look at that objectively, right? We trust Young Living. We love what they do, right? But why on earth would you build your life around waiting for them to drop a piece of information? It just doesn't make sense, right? And so no, even if you're at a high level, excuse me, high level of leadership in Young Living, this is still true for you. The fact is, is Young Living and companies like Young Living, well, I loosely like Young Living. There aren't really many companies like Young Living. You know, monthly promos for companies are based around a lot of different factors, right? They don't, they can't necessarily articulate in advance what the best thing will be to offer six, seven, 10, 12 months from now. It tends to be something that is figured out within 30 days, if not a shorter period of time, right? So you've got to find a better way to release yourself from the reactionary work so that you can still echo the information without playing repeat, right? And, and allowing yourself really the freedom to build a life and, and work by design, right? So and then the final piece here, which is really the most important part, and again, historically, this was not always necessarily true, but especially within the past year, Young Living has been doing an extraordinary job of sending out gift with purchase emails, dripping them out over the course of the month to subscribers. So what we ought to be doing, like I mentioned before, is shining a light toward them, reminding our people echoing, hey, there's the information's over there, the information's over there. We need to be sending them to the Young Living website because that's where they're going to make the purchase anyway. They're not going to buy through you. They're going to go sign into their account, right? Alright, so that's my soapbox for today, you guys. I hope that this makes sense. I hope that you're feeling a little more centered and, and sort of logical about how we're going to get this thing done. Because essentially what's in a newsletter and what we need to send out is going to be basically the same every month, and you get to plan in advance what you want to put in yours, because it's yours. And you can mention or echo what Young Living is doing and theirs, of course. But the purpose of you sending out something on the first of the month is not to regurgitate or play Pete and repeat with your newsletter, right? With what Young Living's already doing. It's to give your spin. It's to give your perspective. It's to present in a way that is resonant with the people who, who said yes to you. They're with Young Living because of how you shared it, right? And so your perspective and how you share information in a newsletter is what they're looking for, right? Alright, so what's in a newsletter? First, we want to have some amount of reflection or inspiration or some other anecdote to open things up. This 100% should not be dependent at all on whatever the gift with purchase is. Make it about the month of January. Make it about the first of the year. If you're in March, make it about the, you know, spring starting. If it's September, it's back to school, whatever that might be, right? Reflection, inspiration, stories, something that opens things up. Not promotion, right? Then we do a quick little blip about the gift with purchase, or depending on what market you're in, it could still be called a PV promo, with a call to action to go to the Young Living website and to take advantage of those gifts with purchase. Then you might want to have some kind of content. So I think a quick and simple recipe. And don't worry, you don't have to come up with something from scratch. You can absolutely find something you love from somewhere else on the internet and cite your sources. Okay, this does not have to be, like, you don't have to come up with a brand new diffuser recipe. Find a diffuser recipe and cite where you found it. Get it off of Young Living's website. Oh my gosh. And then you could even link to the blog post, again, sending people to Young Living, right? Which is what we want to do. We want to echo back to them. So a little bit of content. And then if you're doing live events, you want to have your live events, your featured education. And then if you have any team news, promotions, challenges, et cetera. And then finally, you want to have a call to action to join your member area or your team group if you have one. So you might not even have all of these components. Work with the ones that you have. If you don't have a member area or a team group yet, link to your appliance group that you love or leave it out, right? Not doing any promos or challenges? Cool. Leave it out. Not doing live events? Like you could literally just have this be, here's my reflection on the month of January. By the way, Young Living has got some really cool gifts with purchase this month. I'm particularly looking forward to hitting the 250 PV mark because I am so excited to get this scrub that they're giving away. It's my favorite and I am just about to run out. So I'm really excited about that. And by the way, here's a quick recipe that I found on Young Living's blog. Here's a link to it. And it's a way that I like to use this one thing that's, you know, that I use every January or something like that. Again, not basing this around gift with purchase. Because we're going to be working ahead and then just dropping the gift with purchase info in when it's time to send. Right? We're going to make our lives easy. And then, of course, we want to sign off with maybe a, a quick little funny story or just a see you next time. And that's basically it. This is what's in a newsletter. And if we know that these are all the things that we have, we can plan and then get work done so that this is all ready for us to drop in the information, once it drops from Young Living on or around the first of the month, right? So we can have 85% of our monthly newsletters done months to a year in advance. Who would like to have that? Would it be amazing for you to just wake up on the first of the month and go, oh, I just need to spend five minutes on this today? Because it's literally all you have to do. And you don't even necessarily have to do it on the first of the month, because again, if you are telling your people to sign up for Young Living's newsletter, which you should be, then they're getting it anyway. You could send yours out on the fifth or whatever the next Monday is or Tuesday or whenever you decide to work, right? So let's go learn how to get this done. I'm going to start with a checklist that I've created for you. And you're going to find this. Actually, I'm going to show you where to find this first. Let me go to it and then I can show you how to do this. Okay, right here. This is your resource bundle. Okay, and this did go out via, via email earlier. It's going to be in the description box on the YouTube channel. This checklist right here, this is what we're going to use. So I want you to print this out and write it in. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to make this fillable. This is very much a spur of the moment thing. We have had a couple of, of content providers choose in this year to no longer do monthly content. And so we're really doing this to make sure that you feel really clear on what you need to do to keep your business running with content on a monthly basis. So forgive me, it's not fillable this time. So what you're going to want to do is, you know, print this guy out. Specify the month. Maybe you're starting with February. Maybe you're starting with January. It's the fifth. You still have time. It's still early, right? So put in your month. Do you want to have a theme for the month? You 100% don't have to, but it will make things a little bit easier for you. So it's pretty easy if you think through or maybe go to, well, think about your audience, right? So if you are a parent of school age kids, then you could go to, excuse me, go to a, you know, a calendar for teachers where the month of, the month of January is all about this. The month of February is all about that, right? If your main audience really is women, then maybe you can find themes that are specific, maybe in the month of January, you're focusing on, on hormone balance and stress management. And the second month, your foot, whatever you want to do. This is 100% up to you. Laura, you missed where to find the checklist. This is going to be, when you go to your resource bundle link, it's going to be right down here where it says use this checklist. So anyway, just pick a theme. Again, don't make this complicated. It really, you don't have to go nuts with this. It can literally be winter, spring, summer. Like you can do that. It's fine. So then you want to think about a featured recipe. Keep this oily and keep it Young Living oily. What do I mean by that? By keeping it oily, we are not featuring a recipe for cookies unless those cookies have a vitality oil or corn flour in them, right? Diffuser recipes, roller bottle recipes, spray bottle, spray recipes for room sprays, cleaning sprays. Think about just things that you already use. Right? I mean, there's, do you have a daily drink that you make? Maybe you take like some water in the morning, you put a couple ounces of Nisha into it, you dump some sulfur zyme and ICP into it, you take that to chug your vitamins, right? That's a recipe. Put it in here. Right? Alright, so what's your featured recipe? Is there going to be a live event? Now, we did do a monthly live events training recently. You can check our YouTube channel for that. Now, if you have planned those in advance, then you'll be able to echo that information here in your planner. And then team promotions, this is going to be for things like challenges. Again, this is optional. But you can do, you know, challenges, maybe your team promotion is going to be, and, and feel free to reuse challenges that you've done with Young Living before, right? I think there was one, was it about adrenals that happened sometime last year where you're just basically getting people to take sulfur zyme on a daily basis with Endoflex, I think, right? So, you know, just think about stuff like that. Again, you can plan ahead and just make sure that you've got something thought out. Keep it simple. Keep it, keep it, keep it simple. Okay? So we're going to do that and plan six months in advance or make a copy of this page, print it out twice, plan out your whole year. Make your life easy. Okay? So now, if we're going to prep our six months worth of newsletters, first, we got to fill out this sheet. You want to do 12 months, fill it out twice, do the whole year. Alright, and then we're going to write out details for all of the things above in like a word processor file or in a notes app or whatever you're using for your planning. Don't stuff it in your head, write it down. Alright, so that's going to be a featured recipe. What's the name of the recipe? What are the ingredients? Like what am I going to write when it's actually time to put it into something? For the live event, what am I going to say about it? What's its title, the topic, et cetera? Why would people want to go? And then, of course, any information about the promotions. So write all that information out. Again, please reuse your content. If you own content that you have paid for and you can legally use, reuse it for stuff. Right? If you use Grow Workspace, for instance, you've got some of their incredible resource bundles and educational stuff. You can use their classes to plan out your live events for the entire year. They have challenges in there. Use those and, and set one up, right? We're going to do the, the 28 to elevate or the gratitude or abundance challenge or whatever, like use your content that you already have for this purpose and just plan it out for the whole year. Okay, so then we're going to be creating, or actually modifying some Canva templates, because I've already made what you need for this. And that is both in the form of these, these are all saved replies. That's the actual newsletter itself. And then these different section templates for the recipe, the live event, news or promotions, and then a call to action to join the member area. And then for your Canva, we can use these guys here. So one of the things I'm asking you to do here in your checklist, let me close these out. Alright, one of the things that we're doing here in our checklist is we're going to go to our featured recipe. Oh, you're good. Lisa, you're going to be fine with Canva. Look, I'm going to show you. So I'm going to go to this newsletter square image. It's already done for you. I'm going to click use template. And so right now, we're doing the featured recipe. So I'm going to, so this is the lavender macaron roll on is the, the roller bottle recipe for one of them. I'm going to click that image and delete it. You can, you can keep all of this the same. Obviously, change this to your website name. Right? Or delete it. You're going to just change the name. If maybe we're going to do a, let's see, Luscious Lemon Room Spray, maybe. Let's just do a Luscious Lemon Room Spray. And then we're just going to change this to Room Spray. Now, if you already have from maybe a content provider from Young Living's own, own website, you know, grab an image from the Luscious Lemon, right? Or let's just go over to Elements and search lemon. And we're going to go to photos and just find a pretty picture of lemons and just drag it right in there. Voila, done. I'm going to duplicate this, maybe the following month. Let me delete that. Maybe the following month I want to, maybe it's immunity boost or something like that. So I'm going to type in health. And I'm going to draw this guy in here and I'm going to call this immunity boost. Immunity Boost Diffuser Blend, right? So just go through and make a little image for each of the things that you want to share, right? That's our featured recipe. For our live event, you can use something similar to this. Again, go back and claim that, claim that resource bundle and grab the Canva templates. You could also use the same template here for your events. So you know, maybe if you're doing an immunity boost diffuser blend, and that's what you're doing in February, maybe this is going to be a meditation class. So you just create an additional one of these guys and call this one Meditation 101 with oils. And this is for your class, right? Which is another, just another thing that you would be doing here. For your monthly header image, this is one that you're going to want to do for each of your months. So let's go look at the newsletter header image. You can actually see that it's already done for the month of April. So we could duplicate this and do May, and you could change the colors. But what I'm going to do here is just delete that and I'm going to maybe find tulips. I'll just keep it floral. Maybe you like flowers. Actually, it's under elements. Here we go. How about this one? How about I want to? Maybe not that. Oh, here we go. I'll just change it like that. There we go. Because I actually don't know how to like move it the other way. So look, I'm, I'm not an expert at Canva, you guys. 100% not. So I highly recommend that you just play around with it. Canva is something worth getting better at if you're not currently good at it, right? And I don't think that you need to be an absolute pro at this to get what you need to get done. And if you will, pretty please, follow these instructions and do six months at least at a time. You're not going to have to worry about this for a really long time after you get it done, right? So set the time aside because you know that getting this first of the month information out is an important activity for your business. So give the space to sit down and just get through this series of steps. And I promise you, this is all of the Canva you have to do. And actually, half of them are optional. You just want to change the monthly header and the monthly featured image. And again, those templates, they're already ready for you. Right? So these are here and here's, oh, here's a GIF as well, or GIF. Little animated guy, if you wanted to use that. Now, let's, let's go see what these actually look like inside of Get Oiling, okay? So that you can kind of get the, the gist of what everything will be once you get it done. So I'm going to go in and, and find this, what is it called? Monthly Young Living Newsletter Template. Here we go. So what I want to show you here is that there is that featured image that I, that I just shared with you, right? Or the, the header image, the featured image. We've got our gift with purchase information. And then we have space down here to drop in these additional sections. So you see, just like I told you before, we have these, you know, sort of seven sections of our newsletter. The first one is where we say hello, right? So welcome to April, welcome to January, whatever that might be. Here, you're going to share a few sentences about what you're reflecting on, excited about, or want to share or add value to your subscribers' lives with this month. And then just be sure to remind them what's in it for them to keep reading all the way through. Keep this short and sweet. Remember your writing to help them see a benefit. So make sure that you make it about them. Just a couple of quick sentences here. The next section, if it's not the first of the month, ignore this. Totally ignore this, right? And then if you have gone through and followed the steps in this checklist to go in and modify these separate templates, all we're basically going to be doing is dropping them in here. And then you're, you're basically good to go. So let's go take a look at a few of these. The first one would be their recipe. The first one would be their recipe. Look at the recipe one. There we go. So the example that I've provided for you here is this lavender macaron roll on. You, of course, would go in and you'd change the name of your recipe, you swap out the image for the one that you've created. You could even use the Canva button for this. Here, if we go to replace here, click the Canva design and you, you need to have claimed. The. The templates that I've shared with you in order for this to work, but we type in logo because it's square. Allow your cookies. And then we can actually go down here to projects. And it's going to show the newer, the most recent things you've been working on. So there we go. How about that guy? I'm going to add him. If Canva will let me, it looks like it's misbehaving here. So yeah, you do have the ability, I can't be being weird right now. Of course, you can save that from Canva. And then upload it here. So change the name, swap the image, put your information in here. What I did share with you here for, for the recipe section is to make sure that when you're using these. Let me go back and show you this resource bundle. Where did that go? Here we go. So when you are. Working on these different saved replies here, the featured recipe, monthly live event, the team news, you're going to want to make a copy of these, right? So you're going to make a copy for featured recipe and do your lemon room spray. Then you're going to make another copy and you're going to make your immunity roller bottle. Then you're going to make another copy and you're going to make your lavender pillow spray or whatever that is. Again, borrow from Pinterest, borrow from blogs you love. Go to the Young Living website, find stuff there because you have permission to share their stuff. You're a brand partner, you should be promoting them. So if you're confused or stuck on what to make a theme. Scroll the Young Living blog and come up with some ideas from there. Start kind of compiling some interesting featured recipes in this saved reply format from the Young Living blog. So here, I'll actually, let me show you an example. So I'm going to go to Saved Replies. And I'm going to go find that recipe that, here we go, featured recipe. So this is what you have. So we're going to go copy. And let's actually go over to Young Living. Young Living's blog. And let's just scroll. You could choose a. A direction here if you want to. Definitely don't have to. But how about we'll do DIY? Why not? How about? Elevate your laundry routine. Let's do that one. All right, so I'm going to actually save this image to my downloads file. I think I want to borrow some of this if I can. Let's go see, here we go. Pure and simple citrus refresher, dreamy drops. DIY linen spray, lots of cool ideas here. So what if we do? Okay, essential oil laundry blend recipes. All you're going to do is just copy some of this stuff, put it in your word processor. Obviously, copy this information, put it in your word processor. And then what we're going to do, which one do we want to do? We want to do. Pure and simple laundry drops recipe. And I'm going to pop in, I'm just going to write newsletter in here just to be safe because I want to be able to find it if I need to. Okay, so. Here we go. Now, I need to change this, obviously. This is going to be pure and simple laundry drops. That's obviously not what they're calling them here, but this is. Okay, this blend. Okay. A copy of that. And I'm going to use this paste plain text feature right here. Copy. I'm going to delete that. Okay, so two drops purification, one drop lemongrass. And let me just tap down here and paste. Oops. All right, this blend, da, 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 da. Okay, perfect instructions. Add essential oils to. Dryer balls. Or small pieces of fabric and enjoy the lasting scent. On your laundry, in your bags and more. There we go. So that's pure and simple laundry drops. Now let's go over here to replace. Let's see if Canva will let us do this. I'm going to go to logo. Open, allow. Maybe. I don't trust it. Okay, canvas being weird. Let's go to Canva directly. All right, so let's go find this one. That's what we were just working on, right? And so I want that, that image that I downloaded from Young Living's website. So let me go find that on my computer. And maybe, maybe this might work. We'll see. Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to double click on it. And do that. I don't love it. Maybe here? Nope, I don't love it. That's not what I'm going to do. So let's go ahead and just change out the name because we know we're doing that. Okay, and then. How about we do? Type in the word pure, literally use what's here. Voila. That's lovely, right? And just to make it pop a little bit more, I'm going to drag that pink background. And. We're going to get designy here for a second and add a little element down here. And look, you don't have to take it to this level that I'm doing right now. 100% you don't have to. Keep it crazy simple if that makes you feel better. There we go. So I'm going to, I'm going to download this. And only that first page, because that's all I need right now. Super weird, Canva is not letting me download right now. Anyway, so what we would be doing here is downloading and then. Well, let me download all. Oh, that is so strange. Sometimes it does this. Okay, Canvas having issues today. Anyhow, what we would do is we would actually go over here, we'd hit swap. And we would click here and then go find that image. And that's basically it. Right? And exactly, Brandy, once you do this a few times, you get faster and faster. So imagine, we just did this. And then we're going to go and make five more of them. You're an absolute pro at this by the time you've done that, right? So that's your, your recipe section. You're going to do that again for whatever events that you've planned. And then for your team news, updates, challenges, promos, etc. And then there's one other thing that we. There's one other thing that we need to do, and this is a one-time thing, and this is only applicable if you have a member area. So we're going to go into our saved replies if you've downloaded your resource bundle. And we're going to type in the word newsletter. Because it's going to be in there. All right, join the member area. Okay, so this says meet your community. You could obviously swap this out with whatever you want. You can also keep it if you like it. So you want to tell them why they should stop what they're doing right now and go. They'll find this there and this, and maybe even also this. And tell them to come join the conversation. When you set this particular section template up, you have two options with this button. You can send them to your member vault, to the vault in your member area, or you could use an automation. If maybe folks aren't automatically in your member area, you could use an automation here where if they click it adds them to the vault. Right? So that's another option that you have here. This is one thing that you want to do first. And you'll see it here in your checklist as a one-time activity, right? You want to set that up and then you're going to pop this into, and I'll go show you actually how we do this. We're going to pop this into our, our newsletter, our main newsletter template. So let's go back over to our saved replies. And we're looking for a monthly. Young Living Newsletter Template. And what we're going to do is all the way down at the bottom, because we're going to do this every time. We, we send something out as we're going to be reminding people to come join the, the member area. We're going to just look for. Our join the member area newsletter section template. We're just going to pop it right in there. Right? Delete this off because we don't need it. I'm just telling you what to do with it there. So this is already done. The link is already there. You're good to go. If you have already updated your recipes, you can delete this here, go to saved replies. And go find that featured recipe, drop that in right there. For the educational opportunities, once you have got that one done, again, delete that text. Go find your monthly live event newsletter section template. Drop it right in. And then, of course, for your amount announcements, if you've got announcements, you go in here and you look for team news. And you drop that in. Of course, you're going to be operating on a monthly basis, kind of deciding what's going to be what. And you're going to set that up per month. And again, I've gone through and given you a checklist for everything, right? So the first thing that you got to do, again, you guys, is to decide what is my theme for the month? What's the recipe? What's the event? What's the promo? Keep it simple. Keep it simple, simple, simple. All right, don't make this hard for yourself. Once you've decided what those things are, write out the details so that you can easily paste them into your Good Oiling account later. And then, of course, you're just going to on a one-time basis, set up that invite to your member area or to your Facebook group. You could use that as well. And then you're going to make six copies of your recipe, set all of those up, six copies of your live events. All those details and six copies of team news, challenges, updates, etc. Put those into your system. And then when it's time to actually create your monthly newsletter, you're just going to be using these building blocks that you've already made. Right? You've already got your building blocks because the building blocks is this stuff. It's the recipe, it's all this, right? It's the recipe, the event, the promos. That's it. If you have those, those building blocks done, which you can sit down and do in an afternoon or a weekend, and they're done for the whole year. All you got to do is go in for your first of the month, or actually, once you've got all of those components done, go ahead and create. January, February, March, April, make the whole year's worth of newsletters if you want to. And then when it's time to release the newsletter on the first of the month or near the first of the month. You're just going to go into, and here, let's actually go. We're, we're in here right now, right? So we're going to say, welcome to. So it's called this month's updates, new roll-on recipe. We'll pretend this says January, so welcome to January. Or we'll say, welcome to 2023. And we'll even put their name in there. All right, so welcome to 2023, so-and-so. We've got our little. You know, anecdote that we've already written, it's already here. We'll say January. January's gift with purchase. And so here's what we do. All right, now here's, here is how we connect the dots, you guys. This is where the rubber meets the road. This is the thing that we all have built our business communication lives around. That we no longer have to if we're following the system. So if we go to Young Living. And you go to their homepage for your market, you've got your gift with purchase or your PV promos information, go to that page. And just take a quick look. So if you, so spend 100 PV, you get 10, 10 loyalty rewards points, 190 PV, we've got. Right? So we've got all this information. So basically what you can say, we're summarizing. Summarizing, we're not copying everything, right? So here's what we can say. This month, you can get free loyalty, or you can get additional, we're not going to use free, additional. Loyalty rewards points. A full bottle of lavender. What else? One of my absolute favorite. Supplements for energy. See, I'm not even saying what it is. I want them to click. I don't want them to just read and go, oh, I'll look at it later. She already told me everything. Send them here. Keep them curious. You, okay, so you can, you can not only get. But also a full bottle of my most. Of the oil I run out of the most. And let's bold that full bottle of the oil I run out of the most. One of my absolute favorite supplements for energy. What else do we have here? Let's see, so. The best facial scrub I have ever used. And. And an oil blend designed to help you tackle your goals. How about that? This is like when, when the GWP stuff drops, you guys, this is all you have to say about it. And then you say, click the button below to learn more and then to set up or modify your order so you can take advantage of all that Young Living is offering this month. And then remind them, hey, by the way, if you, if you're feeling overwhelmed, confused, or not sure where to start, hit reply, I'm here to help you. And, and look, this link right here, it's already coded to go straight to this page. And if this happens to land in the hands of somebody who's not already a customer, it's got your Young Living user number, member number attached to it. So you don't even have to touch this. So just go in and say a few things about the gift with purchase. And then move on and you're good. All right, so then, of course, we drop in our featured recipe, which we figured out six months ago. Right? Our educational opportunities, which we planned out six months ago. You know, any team challenges and things like that, that we again planned out six months ago. And of course, this call to action to come join the group. And then we say, I'm so excited for this month. Are you? Share your. Resolution for this year with me. I'm excited. To catch up with you. Remember, because you're writing this to a human that you know, right? Or that knows you. So we hit save. Now finally, we want to send this off to our people. So we're going to go to settings, or sorry, not settings, we're going to go to contacts. And then we're going to go to filters. And we're going to filter for our people who have signed up for the newsletter. And I keep forgetting that no one in this particular dummy account are signed up for the newsletter. So let's just pretend that we've done that. We're going to go to actions, go to mail. And then we're going to go to saved replies and we're going to go find that newsletter that we've been, been working on. And there it is. And so now we can schedule it to go out, or we could send it right now. And it's all ready to go. It's got everything in it, right? So here's your goal, you guys. Your goal is to first sit down, give yourself an hour and say for the next six months. Here are the recipes I'm going to use. Here are the live events I'm going to host and scratch this. If, if you're not going to do it, if live events are too much for you, just leave that part out. Don't worry about it. If all you're doing is sharing a recipe, that's fine. It's totally fine. Do what you can, but plan it in advance. Okay, so plan it out for six months. And then write out the details for whatever it is you're going to be including. Modify those Canva templates again, keep it real simple, you guys, really, really simple. When you're in Canva, all you have to do is delete the image that's on top and you could drag something new in, right? You just click it and drag it. Right? Click and drag, really simple. It's, it's kind of fun to play around with once you start to get the hang of it. So you make those images, then you go in and you modify those saved replies, copy them and make new versions of them. Of course, for each of the recipes, that's six total, each of the events, six total. Each of the, the sort of updates, challenges, promos for the team, six total. And then you make six total newsletters and drop these components into it to fill it out. You have those saved. So when next month rolls around, you go over to the gift with purchase page. You grab the information, write a short summary like I just did, plug it into. Your newsletter for that month and then schedule it to send out. That's it. That's it. And it is, it is a lot, right? It's a lot to do, but when. It's a lot to do, but when you do this, you're doing it once and your business is served for half the year or the whole year. If you have done it this way. Christina, it might be if you're having an issue with downloading this, it might be that you're not logged into your account, maybe. I don't know. That might be I'm halfway into that conversation. Okay, so Shelley's question here, guys, if you don't want your question missed, please do make sure it comes over to the Q and A. So Shelley, when you're making all of these copies of recipes, for instance, where are they saved? Those are saved in your saved replies. All of these are saved replies. Yeah, so I'll go show you that real quick in the system. I know this has been a little bit of a fire hose, but this is a whole project. You are going to want to go back and you know, and follow this checklist. Rewatch for sections if you need them, but what we're going to do here is go under contact settings. Now, if you have claimed the resource bundle, the saved replies will be in there. If you do not find the saved replies in here, and if you type in the word newsletter, they're all going to show up. Right? So if you type in newsletter and you see featured recipe newsletter section template, like these are all called newsletter section template and monthly Young Living newsletter template. If you don't see them, you're going to want to claim the resource bundle. Because you may not have claimed it. Maybe correctly, or or the system didn't get, you may just want to grab it again. Okay, Sheila says, honestly, a single page seems to work better for my brain, having so many saved replies. It's a little much for how my brain works. However, the whole process has been very simplified. Oh, well, we appreciate you and I'm glad that this might have been helpful to you. It does feel like a lot of small parts. I will say this, and I feel I should have probably said this earlier, but I have said this on other trainings in the past. The reason why I'm giving this to you as a bunch of different small saved replies is because this information is something that you're probably going to want to reiterate throughout the month. Right? So if you're sending out a first of the month email, but maybe you're sending a reminder out because you got some new information halfway through the month. Maybe you want to remind people about this same stuff. And you're going to have to go back and try to like chop up your whole newsletter just to get this one blurb that you really just want to copy and paste. That's why we have these little sections. So you can work on recipe, 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 recipe. And you know what? Reuse your content. That recipe saved reply, you can drop into a blog post later. Right? You could put that into another email in the future. If you have, you know, 45 of these recipe templates built up, you've got, you know, four years worth of content you can drop into your emails, not just for your newsletters, but maybe even for your subscribers, right? So having these in these little modular pieces are going to serve you is a little bit more work to to build the smaller pieces. But the modular stuff is really what's going to make the difference, right? Because if your brain works and I need to just work on the whole big picture at once, and you just want to grab one piece from it, you're going to be experiencing, I think, a bit more frustration down the road. I hope that makes sense. Um. Oh, yeah, Deb, this doesn't use pages at all. So if you are on a basic plan, if you are, I actually don't think that there are saved reply limits even on seed and starter plans. You can plan your whole year out, no matter what what plan level you have with Good Oiling. So yeah, there's no no restriction or limitation. Literally what we're talking about doing here is setting yourself up to be able to just send out emails all year. Which is, which is pretty cool. Now, one thing that we may talk about in the future is how to maybe create a static page on your website where we can be updating stuff similar to this. But the fact is, is following the same sort of modular format that I've shared with you today. You could design a page that lives inside of a member area or even on your Good Oiling website where you have these different sections that you just update once a month, right? And of course, you can copy those sections and hide them from visibility. And you know, again, it'll be kind of messy in the editor, but when you see it published, all you're going to see is whatever you've made visible. So you could have six months worth of content in all your different sections on a page that's published. But you can, you can only see what you've made visible on the published page. So lots of different options here. Great comments, you guys. We've just been blowing up in the chat today. Sorry, I haven't been able to keep up with it. I hope that this has been really helpful to you guys. And if you have questions, please try to make sure that those go into the Q and A for our last few minutes here. So we don't miss anything. I am going to show you one more time how you get access to that checklist that I created for you. You're going to grab the resource bundle that's been shared in the chat here. And right here where it says use this checklist. This is the checklist that you are going to use. It's this guy right here. So this is what you want to download and then print out. Or just use it as sort of a template for information gathering and whatever your preferred format is, you could just follow what I've put here and write it in your journal or I, you know, whatever you like to do. You just want to make sure that you have specified under month. January theme is this, and this is not something that you have to like publish or say, my theme this month is such and such. You can just basically use that as guidance for your recipes or what have you. And again, I honestly can't recommend enough for you to go to Young Living's blog and just find things that stick out to you. And find things that they're talking about this month and then remind people inside of the copy of your newsletter. By the way, Young Living sends out stuff even faster than I do. If you want all the scoop on everything they're doing, make sure you're subscribed. Here's where you go. Right? We should always be encouraging our people to subscribe to the source so that we don't have to be repeat. So Young Living. All right, Nozella, hi, Dr. Brown. I guess my question about the blog versus newsletter is more about purpose. When I do one, why do one or the other, or why do both? So your blog is really best for for exposure, for lead generation. It's giving your personal brand credibility because it's your published work for 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 lack of a a more refined term here. So your newsletter is for people who have subscribed. Your newsletter is for people who are in the know. Your blog is for people who need to know you better. I hope that makes sense. So the people who would read your blog are going to be folks who are not in Young Living yet or people who are in Young Living, but still really like your point of view, your encouragement, your perspective, what you have to say. This specific newsletter that we're talking about here is very specifically for keeping your Young Living customer base engaged and informed. So you should do both. Definitely do this newsletter. It's definitely a higher priority for the maintenance of your existing business. But definitely plan long term to have a blog and be publishing on that regularly because it's good for your brand. Is there a template to invite my team members to sign into my website blog or whatever? I don't think I did that or I've missed it somewhere. So there are a lot of options for this, Mary. It kind of depends on what it is that you want them to do. I would check out if you go to our YouTube channel and search for permission marketing. We have several trainings on this. There's one that was relatively recent where we do have templates for you. And basically, it's teaching you a flow where you send out basically a quick campaign to to all of your your folks in your organization and saying, you know, hey, this is me, you may or may not know me, I've got resources. If you'd like them, click here. Right? And so we're giving them that opportunity to opt in. So I would look up permission marketing and also if you want a full like in depth on how to do this email marketing mastery inside of your Get Oiling system, and I'll show you where to find that real quick. That is a course that launched last year. If you are a Get Oiling customer, you have access to it. You're going to go to my account settings and you're going to see email marketing mastery right here. So everything that you want to know about mastering email is going to be in there. It is included. It's free for you. If you are a member of our valued community, so give yourself some space to work on this and you will absolutely find permission marketing systems in depth, explained in depth with resources inside of that course. Okay, when we send this out to people, do they see the newsletter inside the email or do a click link to go to it? They see it in their email, Christina. And any of the buttons that you have in there are going to point. So for instance, the button, the first button they'll see in there goes to the Young Living gift with purchase page. Because that's where we want them to go, right? We want them to see what we're saying. But when we send people stuff on the first of the month, it's not about us. We want them to see why they might want to go over to Young Living's website and purchase product, right? So that's, that's what we're wanting them to do. If they're going to click, we want them to go to Young Living's website. Read, be excited and then go and confirm or place, you know, or modify whatever their their monthly orders so that they get whatever that gift of purchase is that they would like to have this month. Okay. Fantastic. Oh, my gosh, so many comments and questions today. You guys, keep this going, keep this conversation going. I want to encourage you. Especially in light of this sort of movement that we're seeing where it's not just us and kind of what we're teaching here, but a lot of us in the community and folks who are also brand partners who create content are shifting away from this sort of reactive, we're just waiting for the ball to drop so that we can get to work way of working. And so in light of that, I want to encourage you to come over to the Get Oiling community on Facebook. And let's share together resources. If you've got great recipes or if you've made a saved reply that includes a recipe that you think might benefit someone in the community, let's share these with each other and make our lives a little easier, have a little bit of fun. We all have different audiences that we speak to. So why not share the love and share the resource together? So really excited to see what you guys come up with with this. And thank you for sticking through with this. It's been a whole lot of information inside of an hour. But I hope that you put this together and really just get all this sorted out for the next year. Really excited for you guys. We will see you next week and a happy new year, everybody.